We figured we'd give it a shot. But, uh, yeah, it's, we'll talk to the state about it when we, uh, go make a little next. Yeah, I just thought all right. Just from across the street, I'm gonna face it better than just, I don't know how long it's been.
Christine used to go to the museum.
Yeah, eventually.
Highly recommended.
That's kind of the cost of not doing it. Pay for it one way or the other, a little bit at a time. Well, yeah. There's guys out in the states there, and like, I'll see them get three hours running the whole. I don't know, and so they're not, so we're happy to jump on it, but they said, you know, there's a, there's a catching machine, catch can.
I had some PDFs.
They said it kind of ran a couple of years ago. I just, I remember for a couple of years, but, uh, if I go make a, if I go make a statement, but if we go, you know, make a formal request, it'll probably set it out.
We have Xerox, yeah, copy machines, and we can't turn, this was a picture display.
Our sure, we have our pieces, yes.
Well, when you scan it, it's like this. Yeah. But she can't figure out how to turn it, so like, how the, um, the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm like, yeah, and I keep pressing.
It starts from the chop.
I don't know, but, yeah. No, no, I'm asking her.
Oh, I know.
Not you, her, yeah, I'm like, she tried to install a program and she's like, you know, here's the directions, here you go, that's why I go, no, 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 no. I said, we're gonna go through it, and actually, that's an important. And then she's like, I think, I don't know why you do it.
She had your department send you, like, the PDF of it, because those programs give you a paper card, you can report, right?
Yeah, but they're not turning it, but we can't turn a lot of them.
Going to that, it was primarily, primarily intended for the land.
I'm sure you're right, yeah. Maybe I'll come up with, you know, work.
So the rule is, is if you fail, we should charge you.
Maybe I'll come up with something.
Like, oh, everybody else in the island does, we're gonna, you know, and if you fail it, you can't put tires in, and that's like a check.
On my, on my Xerox, uh.
Lock, just because of the land, also, you walk, and maybe second job, but at this point in time, it doesn't very much. So let people be.
Optimistic, you're not overly calling, but it doesn't let me turn any documents at all.
Why?
So I have to do a handout every time there's something that's not printed, yeah.
Boom, they unfairly hit with tires. I mean, I don't think it's due to Steven, made in tire guy. This is more a baby, I'm not getting them out, probably twice the size of the, of the island.
Different, yeah. But I saw, I was seeing the financials are hard, and so I'm like, it can't be that hard.
Think your chair shrunk on the stairs.
It did.
She seems to always come. I accidentally messed with my mom's computer chair one time, when she, like, got in front of her chair and hit the button, and then the button moved forward, and I was like, oh, no, it touched her, yeah, I'm sorry. Good.
I've been in the water most of the day.
Your chair's way down.
It is. Yours is way up. Yeah, that's what I'm afraid, this one's not gonna move either.
You have a game the other day?
Yeah. Juan's like, let's leave, I was like, okay, let's start Juan's, I'm like, wait, we're going over time, she's like, never mind, like, yeah, okay. Pretty bad center. I don't know if you watched it, the game before, that he was launching it over his head, two times that game, and then, most of the ball was coming up over here, and he was grabbing it, and I was like, he had his own struggles, but.
Yeah.
It's tough, man, it's tough to watch. I was bummed, she's like, yeah, I got, got his tickets to France, it's like, man, they better not lose again, every time I watch him.
The bad luck guy, I'm the bad luck guy. You can't sit there, you gotta sit over here.
Like that Zerline, when they had Zerline as their kicker, he just, he's. Oh, my God.
Casey, whatever happened to those, what was it called? Was that a survey that the staff was gonna be, or some kind of form, that's been a long time ago.
We have successfully, this last week, we have got all of the staff emails out, um, contacted the company over, probably about a month and a half ago, we started really pushing it, trying to get them out, um, and they said.
You mean, they haven't been out this whole?
They haven't been out this whole time.
Why?
Due to the staff survey, and then when Veronica left, and then get my new admin assistant, HR, um, and then we had contacted, um, the company that's gonna do the survey, and they said that they're missing AR, so when they do get the survey, it may take them a little while to process it, up to a couple of months. So directed, uh, the administrative assistant to move forward with getting all the staff emails, and doing the surveys, and then getting them to the company, um, and then when they get the results, they'll get them back to us. So it should be happening here, hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
That was four for, right?
Yeah.
I have four days off. Do you decide to work on Fridays and Mondays are holiday?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna make this right.
I do.
I know I did it all on public today, and tomorrow I'm off, and then Monday I'll, I'll go, ah, I go, what? That was my bad.
That's not a bad idea.
Five days off.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. Oh, Veterans Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the guys are, Monday, the weather's looking good, so they're gonna bail for hunting.
Yeah, as I said.
The weather's looking pretty good, oh, when?
Monday, I thought, unless it's changed again, it keeps on changing, like, every day. Yeah, Monday was supposed to be decent.
That means the temperature's gonna drop.
Yes.
It is, absolutely, after Sunday, it's dropping, it's gonna be snowing up high, yeah, it's, yes, it is. My light should be four Sunday.
No.
I don't know, hey, you gotta talk to your, your boss, he's also a veteran, so I think he would, he would kind of be moving towards that way.
You need to talk to the council.
That's what I just said.
Because.
The council sets holidays in the personnel.
Really?
So somebody needs to float the suggestion, and you're added, or changing the holiday on our schedule.
We got two, two veterans right here, and on your council.
But I also like to be off after Thanksgiving, which is a holiday, which is a paid holiday, so there's some trade offs. You know, there's some holidays, but we provide other, uh, holidays or paid, uh, days off for employees that, and I can't even tell you where that came from, city celebrates.
So you're open on Monday?
Yeah, city holidays. Yeah, we are too, unless we're a veteran, maybe in T U today, off. Alrighty. Uh, the day after Thanksgiving.
Let's get this meeting rolling.
Alright, alright, call it in order, six thirty-two. Roll call, please, Mary.
Janice Chutkin?
Here.
John Thomas?
Here.
Rashmanet?
Here.
Michael Kevich?
Here.
Melissa Oliver?
Here.
Everybody's here? Alright, you got a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Sure. A motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing from the public. Going once, going twice, okay, right on. Reports from city officials. Well, this guy's pulling cars out of the side of the office this, uh, few weeks ago to appointing, uh, suggestions to appoint a new fire chief, um, amongst other meetings. Do you have any questions? I'm open. Moving to Brian.
I could have submitted a written report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Um, in your report about the city hall damage, it said that the staff was working with both insurance companies to repair the damage. Is that, is the person that car that ran into the building, are they not liable for a holiday?
They are, they are liable for all of that, but if that turns into a court fight, or if their insurance doesn't cover everything, our insurance would kick in, and they would provide lawyers to fight
Oh, okay.
their insurance company for full payment, or if the coverage amount isn't enough, then our insurance company would, would kick in a difference.
Insurance company, our insurance company.
Right, exactly.
Any more questions for the administrator?
I have one other question, sorry, Brian. Um, you listed Ivy Smith as the new city planner, but you also said that a part-time planning assistant was hired, but no name was mentioned.
Uh, her name is Karen Cruz.
Okay.
She, those here in town have applied for the temporary assistant job, so I've got her working primarily, uh, granites right now, for projects. And, um, I'll be interested to see how that works with this workload split in the planning department over the next six months, and, um, if it looks like it's going well, it needs a good balance of work tasks. As you guys know from discussions that we've had recently. What I started with as the planner and the job growth in eighteen years, uh, the job is much bigger, and, uh, so with new planners, it's, it's worth looking at splitting that job up a little bit, so. If it looks like it's working out, I likely intend to come to the budget committee, and with an eye towards making that part-time job permanent.
Thank you, I have one other question, sorry, um, I had, at the last meeting, I asked, um, to be emailed the personnel handbook, and I haven't received that yet.
I'm sorry, I got a copy out.
Oh, a, a paper copy would work either way.
I must have got a copy, and then had three other things happen, and I got the mail to you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get that mail to you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, was there, Brian, was there any qualified bids for power?
No. So, um, uh, so Oliver is gonna work with the new planner to revise the request for bids, and, um, and specifically reach out to a number of local construction companies that are capable of doing the work, to see if, uh, see if the third time's the charm in getting a successful bidder. I think most, uh, what I've been told is that most folks were likely scared off by the lead remediation requirements. But anyway, it's our intent to put another RFP out, Oliver's, um, offered help, craft the language, and then reach out directly to a number of contractors, and encourage them to submit bids.
Thank you. Oh, one second, Mary. Um, we, we did discuss about D one and D two, and I see you, you have it in land development planning. Uh, when is the current? Uh, what is it, what is the access permit? Lease are gonna be removed from the site, so we can move on.
Uh, well, we can move on anytime, the, the access permits are mostly at the permitees. You know, they're, they're, the permitees understand that the use is non-exclusive, and the use is.
Temporary.
Is temporary. We have an issue, we backed access permit for next year, for if you're actually operating the greenhouse, so.
Correct, but it's an temporary, it's an access permit, it's not a full one-year, three-year lease.
It's not a lease.
Okay. Thank you.
That'll be the only portion of law that we don't have to do any fire point pack, if that you want.
Actually, there's a fair chunk on the other, on the other parcel, that it looks like all alders now.
Yeah.
Was cleared and, and excavated and rocked, that, that alders are there, and the lease has biodegraded, and it's considered a wetland, so the whole place is a wetland.
No more questions, we'll move on to Kimber.
I submitted a report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for Kimber. Um, Kimber, earlier, like, last week, um, the CTA was told that their, um, property taxes for last quarter weren't submitted on time, and then, when we provided a check that showed that it was, um, I don't know, I just, and then today, um, they were told that they were late on a, um, a water sewer bill, and then, our business manager came up and showed that they paid last month. I'm just wondering what the complications are with billing.
Um, so it's not a complication with billing, and so utility bills are due for the twentieth of every month, so for the twenty-first, um, there's a process that we can generate in consell to show, um, any accounts that have not paid as of the twenty-first, and it'll, um, apply a late fee, um, but if, like, we get payments that are mailed in, then we go by, like, the postage date. Um, and so sometimes, like, that get overlooked, and, um, that may have been the case, I'm not sure if the check was mailed in or if it was brought in, I, my understanding after conversation today with Ken, I believe, and I may be wrong, um, look at the check was mailed in, and so it, it may have been just an oversight. Um, on that end, after receiving the check, that we need to do go back in, just write off the late fee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimber.
Thank you.
No more questions, moving on to Mary.
Yeah, I have a comment.
Oh, you have a comment?
Yeah, just, this year, you know, our dollar fund is up to seventeen, and I have noted, I just think that's terrific.
Right on, that is good. Yeah. Talk market went up a thousand points there the other day.
It did.
Alright, move on to Mary.
I'm just made of written paper, you have to answer any questions. I have one question, was it last year that someone had a problem saying that they didn't, that the city didn't advertise enough, was a, um, senior citizen or disabled veteran property tax exemption? I'm just wondering if something has been posted on the city website, at the post office, just trying to catch.
It's been posted everywhere, um, even, I, I mailed applications to, um, ninety residents, last year's applicants, so everyone who applied last year, um, I added a couple to my list that were, um, that applied for, like, a senior card this year, you know, I just checked if they're eligible, so lots of advertising.
Okay.
And I will say that, um, last year, Mary did a very robust job of reaching out, um, advertising to the public. It's not uncommon for us to have people come in and say, I didn't know anything about it.
Right.
We can point to the letters that were mailed, and the postings all around town, so we did not, we didn't hear any consistent complaints about that last year. Mary did a, like you said, a very robust job of getting the public notice out.
Yeah, I just was making sure, so we don't have anyone, try not to have anyone say that this year.
Oh, we, we will, regardless of what we do.
Yeah, I, I got my sinners, I, I was first year on eligible, and I got my letter last week with, uh, notice in the form of hello, so thank you, I think, you know, they're on top of it.
Um, while around here, you didn't wanna strike a meeting off of December, I know that we all got an email with Brian saying something about the travel and whatnot.
Yeah, so the clerk will be, we'll all be getting ready to go to the last convert, uh, municipal meeting, right after the meeting on the fifth. And the council often prefers to have one meeting in, in December, to help facilitate holiday travel, so, yeah. Mary sent an email out to the council suggesting December seventeenth as the one meeting for December.
Yeah, I had, you know, what's your, can I, can I do it there? Of course, what's it mean?
December seventeenth, I think it was.
Is when we're gonna have it, or the one we're gonna strike?
When we're gonna have it, the one we're gonna, yeah, the one we're gonna have, the strike will be the first Thursday in December.
The nineteenth.
On the calendar would be the fifth and the nineteenth, both of those would not be meeting dates, and seventeenth would be added as a meeting, so that would be the one meeting for December.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Mary. Okay, I hear any, any objections to that, that's with the schedule. Moving on to the city planner. We'll be moving on to appoint a new city planner, we do have a new city planner, she's only been here for about.
Four days.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Thirty-six hours, so it's thirty-two hours, so.
Forty-five.
Forty-five hours, she's already working overtime her first week, so, this is Ivy Smith.
Ivy Smith, that comes just from a catch can, Ivy just wanted to share anything.
I'm waiting, we're doing some good stuff, so.
Yeah. She's gotta go to a planning meeting with us, and, uh, the CTA, uh, early learning center, um, head start, um, as well as daycare center proposal, coming up down there on the track, she should be good, I'm hoping, Brian, uh, the other day, real informational, all good stuff. Anything else to ask the planning, Mary?
Um, just busy, it's nice to have an Ivy here, and, um, trying to regulate how fast I hand stuff off to her, but there's a lot of stuff going on, so it's also the right time to train on the stuff that's in front of the planner. Um, Karen Cruz, um, has been, uh, she's also just recently on board, but has been getting her feet under her in regards to the grants and some of the programs. Have Ivy and Karen working together on requests for proposals for the two planning projects, um, the Canary Upland Planning, and the, uh, Track D Environmental Survey, and ultimately, the Master Plan. But a lot of stuff going on over there, so she's, you know, getting more added to her than I would like to see, only four days in the job, but, uh, it's, uh, busy, busy.
Any questions for the plan? Alright, moving on to fighter EMS.
Uh, EMS is excused today.
Excuse submitted in report. So, none of Hans.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've been shorthanded and had some travel last month, and I did not get a written report in, so I apologize. Today, we were able to reconnect the breakwater, the breakwater's held in place with six anchors. A year or two ago, two of them broke, uh, on October eleventh or twelfth, uh, two of the other break, anchors broke, and, um, anyway, we were able to get some parts ordered, and, uh, we got those reconnected today. Uh, I do have parts ordered, um, to fix the other two anchors as well, the, uh, coming from Denmark, so, um, they got a ways to be, they'll, they'll be here in December, and I'd like to get ahead of that next time, so if there's two, two left, that, uh, that, that probably will need some attention. Our Brownell boat trailer, the haul-out trailer, is out of service at the moment, we have, um, Craig Stanley working on it, uh, he's installed, installed a new wire loom in the syst, in the machine, um, getting all that wired, uh, ran where it needs to go. The, the company never gave us a wiring diagram when we bought the trailer, and they don't have any available either, and so it's always been very frustrating working on it without any wiring diagrams. A couple of years ago, I was finally able to get some, um, hydraulic schematics of how things work, but anyway, there, it's, service on this machine's been difficult. Craig has mapped out each function on that trailer, and he has a computer program that he's gonna be entering all that into, so we'll have some wiring diagrams of how, what, how it works, which will be great for troubleshooting in the future. Also, we had, we had ordered up a wireless controller for it a couple of years ago, and, uh, they had promised us some wiring diagrams, and when it came, they, um, there were none, so he's gonna be installing that for us as well. We've had a lot of issues at the ice house lately, you wouldn't think we'd be getting a lot of ice right now, but, um, it's just been, it's been fighting us tooth and nail every time we deliver ice, um, I have a few parts on order for that. Um, and then also, we do have an opening, uh, at the harbor department now, Jason Clay is resigned, so, I'm happy to answer anyone's, if there's any questions that anyone might have.
You were able to stay in budget, buying more anchors?
Um, we're not buying more anchors, we are, we're still using the anchors, the, the attachment points on the breakwater itself are giving out, um, and so we're actually, it's, it's cost around a thousand dollars each anchor, and then we're doing the work in-house, I'm doing the diving, um, we're finding, uh, same boats that wanna work off a bill, and, um, so they're doing some labor. Doug Rhodes came up today just to, to volunteer and help, uh, pull on the, on the breakwater while we were reattaching it, so, another person that was helping was Andy Deering, uh, he was a big help today, so. Anyway, just, mostly doing in-house, so there hasn't been very, a very big cost at all to this, um, and there wasn't any items, but I usually generally put quite a bit of, a, a fair amount of money just for North, uh, North Cove and South Cove repairs, because stuff like this just always happens, it seems like.
And if these end up, uh, if the emergency repair now, and, and the materials for the other two anchors end up impacting harbor budget significantly in some way, um, the dollar amount is well within, uh, my authority to find other money in the budget and move it around, so that the harbor doesn't end up short. Most of these types of repairs at this cost level, the departments are able to absorb into, um, materials and supplies, or some other item in their. But most of these types of repairs at this cost level, the departments are able to absorb into materials and supplies or some other item in their budget.
Excellent.
You want?
Moving to RJ. To RJ, I would point you to the last item on the page of this written report, which I rejoice in hoping. RJ is on two-week vacation.
Perfect timing.
And so he did submit a written report and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
All right, moving on to Oliver, what are you doing there, Mr.?
Submitting a report and we'd be happy to answer questions. Yeah, I just appreciate the effort to try and address our drainage issues in the main street here out of town. Thought I talked about it, but I, you know, there's long-term issues there from lack of maintenance on state. If you have a question, you know, you've been required to put in backflow preventers at North Cove and South Cove on water system. I was under the impression that that had been done a long time ago. Process started in twenty seventeen and I think when COVID hit, I guessed, my, this is my best guess, that, because there was some correspondence in my office and some basic plans and an expired DEC permit. And so in twenty nineteen, I think with COVID, I was speculating, it just kinda got, forgot about with every, you know, with effects of COVID. And we get an annual DEC compliance list for water and wastewater. And it's kind of, we call it our Bible and it's just, it's all, it's all the samples, the different samples that we do. It's kind of a really thorough guide of that. And this year, that was on there. And so when it's on the Bible, you have to start dealing with it or there's associated problems that come with it. And so that's why we've, you know, we've got to the, to the top of the list. There's some, it's not a cheap, cheap install.
Well, I know that.
And on top of that, so we, so we reapplied for the permit. So we're kind of, we're kind of doing our best to kick that can down the road a little bit and find some money, maybe, maybe into next year. We have a, there'll be a third location at the Petro Dock that'll, that'll be required on next year's Bible. And so Trevor Sandy was down here, actually, the mayor caught us, they come there looking at it and Trevor Sandy's provided a design for that and I've applied for a permit for that also. So we're trying to kick that to next year and see if we can find the money to do that.
What's the ballpark cost?
Uh, for all three, for just the material and freight, for all three of them, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. That's why I didn't get done in twenty seventeen, it might have been guesses. It might have been eighty thousand in twenty seventeen, but it's so expensive.
So it will definitely be a capital project discussion item in the next year's budget. And not a lot of room in the budget to do two hundred thousand dollars worth of work that wasn't already budgeted this year.
One second, I got a few questions. Before both of our time, there was a incoming bill from Shaughnessy for landslide that took over a year to get to the city. Oh, did we just help Shaughnessy or did we, are we billing Shaughnessy?
I, I think I know what you're talking about. When I started, there was a landslide, Ryan helped me out, the date, this probably would have been twenty twenty.
You know, but what I'm getting at is, is Shaughnessy will freely bill us for services.
We have an agreement with them.
Okay, okay. If we're, if we're talking about budget for other things, we need to make sure that, that our work is.
Are you referring to the recent water line break?
Yeah, private property, Shaughnessy.
Are you talking about the, the recent, is that, you're looking at my report?
Assistant Shaughnessy with Water Repair and Private System.
Yes, yes. So basically, what we, they, they, we're, we're, we are, we have to deal with it as boil water notice when they have a, anytime, any fixture in the city goes below twenty PSI, a water plant operator is here, he can help with the, with the, the, if I'm wrong.
Tune in a great job.
I think I'm within the tolerance. Anything under twenty PSI requires us to get in touch with DEC and then we have to issue a boil water notice. What happened was Shaughnessy had a break in the five hundred block of their park that we basically, I think RJ called and said, hey, you got hydro leaking, we went out there, water was boiling out of the ground. So we called Dave and said, hey, Dave, how much, how many gallons major are we losing? And he tells us, he says, okay, that's major, we gotta deal with it today. So we had to, we had to go up and find their shut-off for that. So we didn't, basically, we couldn't find it in time, so we shut the whole park down, which required a boil water notice. In talking with DEC, we, we were able, within a few hours, we were able to find the valve for that particular road. City crew went out and found it, Shaughnessy hadn't shown up yet at that point. It was out of town in a, in a deal, it wasn't their fault, they were, it was, they were dealing with other things. We all came together, we got the water shut down, we fixed it, city had all the parts. I, you know, probably a few hundred dollars worth of parts, a lot of effort with Shaughnessy. We had to send in samples, no different than the last boil water notice that we had. Send in samples, deal with, deal with DEC on that aspect, get the clean samples back, close the boil water notice. So in general, Shaughnessy and, and the city of Craig have a pretty good working relationship. When, when they have problems, we come and help. When we have problems like the slide, they come and help and we try to check it accordingly.
Thank you. Are you going to, once the season starts, look for another position for parks and rec?
We have a one that we're planning on posting a job in the next few weeks for, yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on to parks and rec.
Still these are parks.
Well, you're recruited, doing a great job, you guys on all side streets, main streets, knocking down the berms at that time of year. Fall, gotta love the leaves and the drainage, you guys are doing a good job, thank you. Moving on to recreation. At least she submitted a.
She did, she was gonna try and call in.
Other than you're on here tonight, are you on the phone?
Gretchen.
Yeah, yeah, this is Gretchen, I'm on the phone, does anyone have any questions with the report tonight?
Not hearing any questions, thank you, Gretchen.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gretchen.
Moving on to Stephanie at the library.
Um, I'm here to report and just wanted to add, I remember where I talked about a grant that we received from Matheson to help us replace some of the wrenchings within the library. Things like our future in tables and chairs that have been in use for forty years. And the grant was very small, it was about nine thousand dollars. And part of that would be replacing the patron chairs. And so I started to look for patron chairs to replace them. And I found twelve chairs for like four thousand dollars, I was like, okay, like, maybe we can make it. And the shipping they quoted me was twelve thousand dollars. So I was really hoping, the chairs that we do have are, are very worn, but they're actually quite dirty. And so I was looking to see if we could get some to reupholster them, somebody to refinish them. And I just wanna say thank you to public facilities because Justin has been sanding down these chairs and making them look beautiful. More also getting them upholstered by a commercial reupholsterer. Really late in Kaufman Cove. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the extra work. I think it'll do a big difference.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good work.
I have a question or just comment, just great to see that you, and all the libraries in the state were able to pull together and get the public library assistance grants, you know, reestablished. Kind of good work by all of you. And then I thought the history of the Craig Library and especially the first acquisition of books has been really interesting. I'm just curious, is it, is it known if any of them original books are still with the library?
I don't know, actually.
That's pretty interesting too there.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, there might be some in our Alaska section. I've found books that go back as far as like nineteen seventy-six that are still circulating, which is pretty incredible, like for our library. I know that would be really cool if they were.
All right, thank you.
Oh, we, so I also wanted to thank Nick and Mitch for helping us with the roof. There has been a bull pine that has grown up quite large and it's been throwing a lot of needles and it's impeded there being a gutter where there should be and it will burn, cut down awesome, awesome bells and go with the needles and so thank you very much.
Here.
So all of you have a really high bar.
Now we can put lights on it, that time of year. Thank you, Stephanie. All right, moving on to reading correspondence, letter from Craig Tribal Association. Do we have any questions, comments? Looking to lease purchase land for a gas station.
Yeah, we're down to one, something needs to happen.
Yeah, hopefully they get the, I know it's doesn't help us over here, hopefully Quack feels, gets going.
They're supposedly up and running, it's a self-service.
Oh.
Is what Teresa Parabens, I think it's their chair or president, she sent out a thing on Facebook, I think it's open.
It's open now, perfect.
But it's self-service.
Yes, I always used it as self-service before, but I seen they, one day they had it riveted off and when they first got done finishing up AC. So I hadn't, you know, I haven't seen too many cars over there yet. Should put a big sign up.
I've got a meeting scheduled for Tuesday morning with Josh Patterson. Who is the gentleman that bought the shop, the seller himself. I don't have any more information tonight, but certainly the, his plans and whether or not they include gas, uh, gas pumps is, is on my agenda to talk with him Tuesday.
Fuel is three fifty-six in Ketchikan.
So. Does the city have any potential?
That ends up up to the council's discretion, right?
She probably maybe suggests them talking to Shaughnessy because they will take the most property.
Quack here.
Really, you know, land, city has.
Don't even go there, we're gonna hit. No, no. No, you don't wanna get me going, Mike.
Yeah, they have land that is used, city land. Really, we're limited to the Camry property or Track D, which both are kind of on schedule for their own development plans. And I think it would be really premature to set aside any of that property for those reasons. Beyond that, we, we really don't have any parcels left over.
I thought Shaughnessy was gonna build one years ago, right at the intersection of Port St. Nick and Quack Island, it's a great location, I thought.
They had some difficulties with the vendor that was building the building and so that project fell apart. I, I think that CTA and Shaughnessy have been negotiating a lease of that same site for Shaughnessy, for a CTA to build a gas station. But I, I think likely those negotiations have fallen apart. So that site's been talked about, I haven't heard anything from Shaughnessy in terms of them picking that gas station project back up again. But that site's been talked about between CTA and Shaughnessy for some sort of lease that, that CTA would open a gas station again.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm open to different considerations and this, we, we definitely need one. It's a huge inconvenience to our community and it's also a loss of revenue for the community. You know, I'm interested in what the environmental assessment out there shows us and that will help, you know, determine if there's an opportunity. And then additionally, I would like to ask Brian, if you were talking with a gentleman that owns the old Shaw Ellis thing, if they say they're gonna do it, we need something that's pretty firm. So, you know, I'm, they've been telling us that for, what, two years?
I can certainly strongly suggest it, but it's private, it's a private development. And ultimately, if I were the, the property owner, I probably wouldn't sign anything that solid, right? So I can certainly encourage him. We can talk about some ways to incentivize that particular development. It's my plan when I meet with him on Tuesday. But I'll, I'll just be upfront, I think it's not likely that we're gonna come away with him making some written guarantee that he's gonna develop in, in a way, in a certain way.
And I, I understand that, I don't expect a written guarantee, but I think it's also fair for him to understand that the city is gonna start looking at multiple options and he may lose an opportunity. I mean, he's got the premier location to do it.
I'm happy to share that.
But if he doesn't, you know, do something here really quick, I'm all for seeing the city work with whatever we can to make other alternatives come to fruition.
There, there's the spot right there where the nursery, the permit, the access permit, that could be a viable spot. They, they don't need, they probably really don't need much square footage. It's right on the road, there's, the Trojan Leaks that is coming up in January, that's on the corner. There's, there's still some land that is out there.
So basically, there's a few potential sites out there that may be worth looking at, is what I'm hearing. And then discussion with a few other entrepreneurs in the community that we may be able to see what their plans are. You know, dealing with hazardous material sites is a big pain in the neck, so that's probably where, you know, a little bit of this hiccup on, on his site down there, but. All right, any more discussion around the CTA letter?
I just want to say I'm glad that somebody's interested.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Okay, moving to letters from Generation Southeast Community Learning Center.
Brian, what's our, what, what does the council roughly have for donations left?
I'm sorry, I haven't, I didn't pull that number today, so I'd have to look at what the council spent. We're still kind of waiting to see if any council members are interested in attending AML, which would likely be paid for out of the council's discretionary fund. I don't have that answer, Josh, I can ask Kimber to look that up and send it out.
Well, that, we can't really help out these guys until we know our funds.
Well, wouldn't we know, like, I'm not able to attend the conference, are you?
I will already be an acreage and I will not be going.
Chanel, are you able to go?
I've gone before.
Oh, oh, it's for you, counselor.
No, you can go, I would love to go, but I'm already gonna be gone all December.
Oh.
So.
Well, I mean, I was just in the process of just verbally saying who could attend.
When you said again?
The eighth through the thirteenth, right?
The newly elected officials training is on December ninth.
And I highly recommend if no one's done it before, teaches you parliamentary role, accusing yourself if you've got, you know, issues, it's good to do.
Um, I will say, I think there's money in the discretionary fund. I think the council has used some of it, but not all of it. I seem to recall that we donated five hundred dollars last year to the same event. But it's, it's up to the council, council wants to make a donation, we can first look to take it out of the discretionary fund.
I'm just gonna guess that we have right around four thousand dollars left in our account, remember? I remember we had, before we did the donation for the elder, we had the school asking for six thousand dollars with the uniforms that we didn't donate to. Um, so then after that, I wanna say that there's probably roughly, right around probably four thousand dollars in that account, but.
There's also the option.
Minimum, or minimum, yeah.
I think that's, I think that's probably, I think that's a real good guess. Uh, there's also the options, the council is aware, there was some discussion at the last meeting about the adopted elder donation and I had more discussion with the staff member and so CTA can't take on any more elders. And so the council still has to make a decision as to whether it wants any of that money returned to the city or all of it or part of it or whatever the council decides tonight. And so that money could be made available for a donation to the Generation Southeast Thanksgiving dinner as well. If the council is, if the council intends to ask CTA to reimburse the city for some of that donation or all of it.
That was two thousand dollars?
It was two thousand dollars, yes.
Move to appropriate five hundred dollars for the discretionary fund.
A second.
Any discussion? Real call about?
Jan Stroger?
Uh, yes.
Sean Thomas?
Yes.
Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Michael Kimmich?
Yes.
Sean McKinney?
Yes.
Nessa Herbert?
Yes.
Thank you.
If there's some, if there's some problem with, I, I don't think there is, I think there is, right? But if for some reason there's some lesser amount left in the discretionary fund, I'll let the council know about it.
Ramonda updated two thousand twenty-five Klock ship schedule. Just kind of question, did you guys end up meeting with them on the trails or?
Uh, we, uh, we've met internally and we talked about potential cost to the city. I did tell, um, the Port Klock or who knew to them folks, that in general, uh, we could accommodate the excursions that they're, they've asked about and that there would be some cost as yet undetermined for them. So Klock, uh, Port Klock, uh, has requested use of the cemetery on the trail for guests during the, during the cruise ship season. So as you can see, there's, um, I think fifteen, fifteen stops planned for this summer. And that will increase some cost to the city, right, and it'll, we'll have to have a higher level of maintenance. Restrooms will have to be cleaned more often. And so Oliver and the corporation was there and Kimber, we sat down and talked about some of the additional costs. We haven't given a number yet to Port Klock, but their intent would be to bring eight or ten groups a day, groups of ten to twelve people and walk them out and back on the cemetery on the trail.
Some of the ships are coming in with twelve hundred and fifty people, so they're only gonna be bringing ten to twelve people at a time or?
Yeah.
With their bus, okay.
Uh, that, that's what they're telling us.
Yeah, no, just, um, one of the things we didn't descend, you know, they well trail, but the cemetery was on the other side. And that was one of the locations that we really didn't want, you know, people going through and walking through the cemetery, so, um, it would, and I would highly, I mean, if we're gonna move through with this, I would highly wanna see some kind of a head tax for them coming through our trails and I mean, and I wouldn't probably budge with, with them without having some kind of a head tax on, on, on especially going out that trail, so.
And, and I look at it not necessarily as a head tax, but certainly we have the option to charge. And some of the charge will be to cover our additional costs and it's not unreasonable.
Well, I think the, what, yeah, per, per person is what they do all the way across the country and, you know, it's not, uh, they're gonna wanna walk out that trail, there's a lot of, uh, good scenery and it's not crazy to ask a certain price. I know Cassandra's getting eighty-five bucks a pop for people to walk out the trail, I'm not gonna say we're gonna get eighty-five bucks a pop, but, the more and more they go out, the more and more word of mouth goes and next thing you know, it's gonna be forty people out the trail, fifty people out the trail. But they gotta be able to do something and keep them, you know, on the path and not walking around the cemetery, cause that's, uh, that's gonna be a hard feat to do.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't made any agreements with cruise lines other than the fact that we can probably accommodate it, so. They completely, um, they should have the understanding that the, the use will come with, and likely will do it under an access permit. And it will come at a cost and.
Right, yeah, it doesn't benefit us as a community for them to come into our, into our trails without, um, you know, this is all benefiting them. That whole cruise line has did nothing but benefited themselves coming into the small community so far. We offered them a walking map to all the businesses, they said no. So I would like to see some kind of a head tax going if we are gonna move forward with them. For, for sure, that's, um, rather than just doing a time of material cost quote or something like that.
Yeah, no, no, we'll, we'll develop a cost per customer, per passenger.
Could we say that some of those funds would be used to clean up the cemetery more often than it is? I hear that complaint all the time, um, that it's, it looks very unkept.
We, I have some understanding. And, uh, and not that that can't be accomplished, but I don't know that I would look at it in that phrasing. Because ultimately, council wants to appropriate more money for cemetery maintenance, council can do that, regardless of the source, right? I think it's a little trickier to dedicate some money and then have to track it, but if council in the next budget cycle wants to increase the budget for parks and facilities and have a higher level of maintenance, that's, that's certainly within the council's budgetary authority.
So I've volunteered at the cemetery because I like cemeteries. The problem is, is that what the city's responsible for, they'll go ahead and mow and take good care of that, but it's the plot is the family's responsibility, cause the city can't go in and disturb it.
Right, no, I'm not talking about the plots, I'm talking about the, the sections that the city is responsible for.
I think they try really hard and then people can go out and volunteer, I'm happy to go if anyone's going.
If, if you share, uh, you know, send me an email with specific concerns or things that you'd like to see done. I'd happen to meet with Oliver and his staff to see what they can accommodate now and again, we can put it on the list of budget. We do have money in the budget for cemetery upgrades, it's primarily to, uh, put in the budget for the expansion of the cemetery, but
Yeah.
We've got some funds that we can use on the cemetery.
Yeah, no, I know Oliver and his team, uh, you know, are spread thin and they do a lot for our community.
I, I can just, I have never heard that, so I'll, usually when I hear something like that, I'll look at it myself, like they're warning me. I'm happy to report on it.
Is that, would you like people to contact you directly or would you?
No.
No, okay, Brian, okay.
A council member, uh, Chanel McKinley contracted me directly and we went and looked at some water issues, if you wanna be more informed about. Happy if anybody, if I haven't been accommodating, anybody has something specific, I'm happy to, can't say I can fix it.
Right.
That minute, but.
For sure.
I, when we hear about it, we put it on the list.
Okay, thank you.
Yes to getting contacted, correct?
I'll direct them to Brian.
I'm happy to take the emails and likely all I'll do is hand them off to Oliver.
I, I have one, one comment to make about the cruise ship's schedule, we had what, seven, eight this year?
Six, 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 sixteen.
And I heard that this is even gonna be more in year three.
Twenty over twenty two ships.
Yeah, I think it does up over twenty. So Mary does a great job with these, uh, QR codes. Would it be too hard for us to do like the little mile signs and have a QR code for city maps for businesses? Because if we can't get it to the consumer, then at least they can scan it when it's right there in front of them when they're walking our streets.
Oh, they, 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 they've agreed for one drop-off spot and that's been the CTA, we, we, we reached, which is great. Um, I reached out to them personally, thinking that this might be a, a, you know, good move to have, you know, some type of economic benefit to our community when they were coming here and I reached out to them, um, to try to, you know, gain more sales tax into the businesses here in, in the community and, um, they basically told me that they solicit a hundred percent of their own, uh, tours. They run all their own stuff, um, which basically changed my outlook a little bit more until they wanna start doing something that's gonna benefit the community. Um, so for them to come to us after, they said maybe we'll talk about it in year two. Um, you know, I offered, you know, maybe a vendor boost, log and show, stuff that could have been opened up this year. Um, that could have benefited every little, small business in the community and they, they told me no. Um, I've been told by other ports, by Petersburg, um, that the, the cruise lines that come through Petersburg, they tell them, they tell their guests to wait till they go to Ketchikan, Ziccan, Juneau, cause they own all those stores there. So, um, they didn't, they, they didn't rip any economic benefit for them going to Petersburg either. Um, and so being that this place is landlocked and they really don't have their port developed yet, um, I would love to have more discussion to see if this is actually gonna benefit, um, our community. Um, cause now they're coming and talking about walking out our trails, which I walk almost every day. Um, and so, um, if that's not gonna be economically benefit to us in any point or way besides just them coming and walking out our trails, then, um, yeah, they, they need to come up with a business plan or something to us and show us how it's gonna benefit, you know?
I, I, I hear exactly what you're saying and I feel all your concerns.
Yeah.
But I also know that if we don't do it for ourselves, they're not gonna come sweep in to help us. Cause like you said, they have other ports where they can make even more money online. And we really need to start thinking about, Klock is already, they're in the same thing, they're gonna start doing their own excursions. That means that they're gonna have information once the people get off in their community.
W- w- a website's gonna, gonna be the best way because the only way to contact those people off of this hop before they get here. And what we do every time we travel to Washington DC, I'm gonna go see all of the, you know, monuments and everything else, I get on the website and I find some individual. It wasn't really, cause I was actually looking at, you know, hey, I got kids, you know, they might be able to start some kind of a, you know, tour around the island. And it really wasn't economical if they weren't willing to, um, you know, utilize our. Yeah, you know, because I can't go buy a twelve passenger van and only do, uh, twelve people six times a year, but they, you know, but, um, yeah, no, I'm, hopefully in the future it'll be positive, but I think we definitely need to reap the benefits of it.
And they have, we need to.
I, I just wanted to, to add something that, um, we have at the library is a special collection, which includes some historical documents from Craig and the founding of Craig and, or well, not founding, but like the, of the city as an organization. And, uh, there's a conference plan from nineteen seventy-six and in there they have some surveys from the public. And what I found really interesting is that the comments in the section were not undifferent from what we hear today. And then the public attitude towards bringing tourism and tourists as a source of, of dependent, being dependent on for our economic, um, sources. Um, one that stuck out to me was keep the tourists out with the direct quote. And I don't think that, that has changed for the public at all in since then. Um, and yes, there's money to be made, but I also think that this, I mean, I think the community doesn't see that self, its self that way. I just thought I'd contribute that.
You are the last party in the conference.
Can I, that's my wife. And, and I'm hoping, I know that the, 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 the Port Klock folks did a couple of things different this year than they did last year. Including I saw, I saw a solicitation for locals to, uh, provide excursions, right, which would be great, that would create opportunity for locals to, I don't know, whatever it is, go out and do whale watching tours or short fishing charters or, or whatever. Um, I don't know, I don't know what the results of that solicitation by the cruise folks were. Um, I do know that, yeah, last year was not good, it was not a good outcome. In fact, we asked the cruise lines before they, before the first ship, we suggested, um, that they do a walking tour of the cannery site. The suggestion was that the, the historic, uh, group would maybe volunteer to walk people around and they take donations for the historic, for the society, right?
I didn't hear anything about that.
Well, cause it didn't get any more, because we talked with the, we, we made that suggestion to the person in charge of the excursions and they flat out told us that they were not gonna add a se- second stop for their buses in Craig. And so it didn't make sense to create an excursion over here when the passengers, the farthest they're gonna go on bus is the CTA, right?
Couldn't that be changed, can't they drop them off down?
Sure, if they will.
Yeah, we, we, we had discussion with, it wasn't that they're just taking them to one spot, it was more that, um, they basically said they run the route. They benefit, basically economically benefit, um, with their tours, they have their agenda. Um, and so, which I was naive, I was like, looking for, this could be good for the community until, um, I actually had some discussion with them and I was, I literally told them, I said, if this doesn't benefit our community, then, then there's no reason for you guys to continue to, you know, to come to, to come to Craig, um, on, on your guys' stop. I was out there like a true just trolling and I watched the whale watching boat, they over there for like the first couple of ships and then I'm right down the middle of the drag, there's whales all over the place and next thing you know, he was right on top of me and whales and every time the whale, they'd get right on top of the whale, the whale wouldn't move, um, everybody, all the locals pulled their boat out, just went back to town, I stayed out there. If I literally would have hooked a keen, I would have been going right into all that catamaran. Um, so, I mean, they, they, they put a bad taste in my mouth this, this year and so if they wanna continue to try to use our resources, they're gonna have to actually start communicating with the city of Craig and, and show some kind of a benefit.
Now, all of the disappointment from last year's interaction and the potential disappointment from next year's doesn't prevent us from, I think Josh's idea is good that we put some QR codes or something that's easily accessible around town.
Cheap.
Right, and it's cheap and easy to do. And, um, we might assign some staff time into getting those QR codes on the cruise line Facebook pages, um, right, as well, I see a lot of, a lot of Facebook traffic related to these cruise ships. Did you have a question there?
Uh, just some thoughts and comments, I, you know, if they wanna use our trail, I actually think that's great. I do agree that there should be some kind of compensation in some manner. Um, I have heard comments that it'd be nice to see the cemetery cleaned up a little more. But this could be one of those deals where if we, you know, if they wanna have people walking out there and we can generate a revenue stream there, then that's the revenue stream theoretically help keep the library, or excuse me, the cemetery a little cleaner.
Yeah, absolutely.
And even though right now their drop-off spot isn't one spot, um, man, I seen people walking around last year, all over town, they clearly were not from this area. And they started walking a sore thumb, so you know they're getting out and seeing different areas and I, I think the QR code is good and if people are gonna come to Craig and Klock, come to Klock on a cruise ship, they're gonna look up our communities on, on Facebook or look up for our webpages, our homepages, things like that. So we can, we can work on creating more awareness for our existing businesses and that will generate some of the traffic.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I, I looked at these guys as being here short timers, I didn't look at them like, you know, people coming. people coming in here utilizing our resources. That's why I thought it was going to be a benefit to Craig. They're not out fishing, they're not out hunting, they're not out, you know, utilizing our resources. So I thought a quick stop into town would would be beneficial. So hopefully the, you know, stops, you know, will will work someday for them. And and yeah, as long as it's generating revenue and it's not, you know, you know how it is around here when it rains and a lot of people go down a trail to, you know, recavic on a, on a trail.
And speaking of the trail, I mean, if if we do know we're going to see some some fair amount of traffic out there, the trail would need some more D1. There's there's places where you, it's worn down to the point where you got pretty big rocks. So there were trepazards. I mean, there's things like this that if they want to commit to using your trail, then we can do some some cleanup.
Well, also trails are, you know, forest service trails, there's there's a guideline, the standards for trails. Um, was it a liability if somebody walks down a trail and a wind maker comes down and takes one of these people out? Because there's a thousand of them walking down any of our trails around here because the trees aren't limbed, they're not taking down the dead fall. Um, every time after a windstorm, you walk out there. And so we have no um basically baseline on how to maintain trails here that we own in the city. Um, I'm an old logger, so I walk looking up all the time. My life comments on all the time. I'm like, look at that. She wants to take a rest around that big spruce on Sunny Hay Trail. And I'm like, no, we run by this and we take a rest once we get around the corner because there's branches bigger than I am that are still hanging up, that have been there for three years. So we're going to start, I mean, there's there's liability clauses. There's a lot of stuff that comes with this other than just, you know, head tax on on people utilizing our trails.
My my overall thought on it is I, what they're describing that they have set places they want to go and set businesses they support, that's the reality. Catching will tell you that for the last three or four decades. But I still think that it's worth working as much as we can within reason to try to be accommodating with it. It's clearly coming whether we're, you know, one likes it or not.
It's also reasonable for us to figure out ways to push the envelope a little bit. And, you know, we 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 were kind of shut off from distributing walking maps last year. But we can put QR codes of signage up all over town if we want to. We can, we can provide an avenue for the local businesses to provide, you know, some incentive for passengers to show up at local shops or restaurants through the same QR codes, right? So those things
Cheryl, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I I have a comment. I don't know, are we allowed to make a public comment?
You can make a public comment.
Um, I I kind of differ. Um, my opinion differs with its people at the council and the discussion here. I I just hope the council and the city remembers that this town is not just for tourists. The trail was not built for tourists. Um, we use it every day. It's a meditation point for me. Um, I I just hope that that consideration is given. I mean, if we're already making deals with them for ten groups a day. I mean, I I hope there's just more communication with the public so that people know what's going on. Um, and there may, there will be days that I won't want to walk the trail. I mean, if I know there's ten groups on that trail, it's something I do most days and it's just a peaceful place for me. And I just hope, I I don't really know if there's anything the community of Craig can do. I don't really know where we stand on the growing cruise industry business. But I but I've seen it and I'm hearing it from towns like Sitka and Juno and Yakatah, who are now trying to rein this industry in because it's just completely controlling their communities. And I just thought Prince of Wales wasn't going to go that direction. I mean, I thought we were okay with independent travelers and small cruise ships. But as I'm seeing, the number, the numbers increased, the size of the passengers increased and the spread of the season and saying that this is just going to continue to grow. I I I hope we can do it the way we want to do it and not let it take over this this island and the communities on the island. And change not only the way of life we want to live, but they will be using our resources. And some of the complaints about the harbor was that they were utilizing subsistence resources to build that harbor. And there are going to be half day charters that can go out of there and and be utilizing resources. So I I I just, I just hope we can think about this a bit.
I wanted to say that you guys are talking about like having to be like roden with the cruise ships. But also we don't have to. People on the cruise ships aren't stuck to whatever they do. They are let off port and they can go do whatever they want. So if you had a big old bus that said City of Craig on it and you had passengers loaded up and you could drop them downtown, they're not going to only go to a trail. I mean, I had people come in and be like, we didn't know that there was anywhere on the island to be able to drink and eat, you know? And that's what you want to do on vacation, or most adults do. And so they'll come out and use other resources, go to our strictly local shop, places like that and benefit more from the community. And you don't have to be tied in to a cruise ship that is going to sit there and tell you when and where they're going to use your facilities and how.
Absolutely. The the one thing that they do have full jurisdiction of is the port down of down there where where the bill comes in. So which is gated. Um, so I'm not sure, because that that's that's a great, I, you know, great point.
And our buses.
They have buses, but are they going to allow the City of Craig bus to go down there? They're going to have to walk to the pavement. It's all all the discussions that we'd have to have.
We went to CTA about running a short route bus through Craig from CTA parking lot.
You you could, but like I said, Kewalkina has leased that land to them solely. So without Yeah, the the Kewalkina has no, they they don't, they don't deal with it the the cruise lines does. Because I went to them talking about, you know, opportunities down there and they said you'd have to deal with cruise lines. All right.
Just real quick, uh, I heard a whispered comment that makes a lot of sense. You can't access a QR code if you don't have internet. And if you don't have internet, you don't have AT&amp;T. And I get many people in the library who do not have AT&amp;T and are horrified and shocked and lost. So as nice as that is and cheap as it is, I don't know how feasible that is for actually people that are coming to visit.
Well, it sounds like this is definitely a lot of, a lot of discussion on this topic. Um, we can totally, we're going to be discussing it. It sounds like a lot more, I think, uh, keeping the public aware is is going to be, is going to be a key to this. I think a public meeting if it takes it or whatever else, um, before we make any decisions. You know, would would probably be beneficial.
Let's suffice it to say that there's probably some advantage to working with the cruise lines and having the development, having some control and say in that process. And there's also likely some uh strong benefits to kind of realizing where we can do our own thing.
Yeah, I'm 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 not like, I I just, it'd be nice to be able like, you know, to let the community know if there is going to be a ship on that day and there's going to be a tour on that day. Maybe we create a website that would benefit them as well as the people in the community um with the schedule. But, yeah, and it's it's just going to force their hand to actually communicate with us and start a working relationship. Any more discussion on Kewalk? All right. Here none. Moving to the adopted elder discussion, CTA.
So the council at the last meeting or the before asked me to reach out, back out to the CTA and again ask them to serve those non-tribal elders, which was part of the agreement when the donation was made. Um, and the answer that I got was the same as I shared with the council last time. Uh, the staff person working on this project said she doesn't have enough bandwidth to easily serve all of the tribal elders and is not going to add any non-tribal elders. So the same question now is back to the council. Uh, what you want to do with the donation, CTA is prepared to send it all back or some portion of it. The three options uh are really, as I've outlined on the memo, can accept the offer for half of the donation or can ask for some other amount, some are all to be returned. Or the council can choose not to ask for any of it to be returned. But all of those options are with the understanding that CTA will not be able to meet the requirement that the council put on the donation that non-tribal elders will also serve. So at this point, it's really council's discretion which of those options you want to move forward with.
I think that would be fair.
You know, I I personally, all from my opinion, I think you should all come back. We we fund a number of different programs and when we do it, they're always programs, there's equal access for all. And that was why I did make the suggestion. It was agreed to. The basis of the, you know, the resolution for support was that it would be available for all elders in the community. Um, you know, I think it's unfortunate that, you know, that's not in the cards. But based upon the, you know, public funds being available and utilized for the community as a whole, I think that it should all come back. And that's not to disparage what what CTA is doing. I think it's terrific to provide care packages and traditional foods and such to the elders. But I just think that city funding, it should be equal access for all who would make those appropriations.
They do have elder lunches once a month, which is tomorrow, and that's open to the public. They have people from Cassan. Every now and then they get someone from Heideberg. We get a lot of people from Kewalk and it's it's tribal and non-travel.
Brian, do you know, do we, do you recall what their original um request was? I don't think there was an amount they were asking for donation.
I think it was just asking for donations.
A general donation, yeah.
I'd I'd have to go back and find the original letter, but that's my recollection as well.
I mean, I would like to point out that these tribal members are also city residents, City of Craig residents. And we have, since I've been on the council, we have given various donations for the Spanish club to go on their trip. We've given a donation to Ralph Mackey, I believe, for, um, I can't remember what that was that time.
It was a tribal, a language immersion or something.
Right. And that, I mean, we've given a variety of donations is what my point is. And um, you know, these tribal members are also city residents.
Well, CTA has been giving the city money for years and years. I mean, we added up all the dollars that have gone that helped with, I think it was the fire truck, they've helped with radios, new radios for uh equipment, I mean, all kinds of stuff. So I just think we all should be good neighbors, no matter what walk of life we come from.
Exactly.
I liked Jan's idea of asking for half of it back.
I do too.
I was looking for a motion. We're looking for direction on that.
So if the council's comfortable with making that motion, that would be the next step.
All right.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to ask the CTA for half. Second.
Open for discussion.
I was just going to say that in her, in the letter, when she says that she doesn't have enough in their budget right now for the CTA elders and the staffing, I just want to ask for any of it back, just so that the elders have a good dinner. But I'm also okay with asking for half if that's what the council wants to do.
This will be a roll call vote?
Sure.
All right.
We're not appropriating money.
We're not appropriating, we're not bad. It has to do with money, so.
Yeah, roll call vote would be fine.
Jan Scherzer?
Yeah.
Sean Thomas?
Yes.
Josh Bennett?
Yes.
Mark Gavitch?
Yes.
Sean McHenry?
Yes.
Mel Smith?
Yes.
All right, that's all the council.
We've backed up through that and have the process.
It went on to RC hardcore's approval.
Moved to direct staff to work with Prince of Wales Electronic to develop an East Hamilton hard hardcore into the RC track.
Open for discussion.
Uh, yeah, I I had some concerns. Is it going to be isolated just to the track? I know there's a lot of foot traffic and there's, the bank just falls around that whole perimeter, even the parking. So the more foot traffic, this is great. I'm not, I'm just worried about people getting outside of the fence stand area is my concern. We get more people right now, the park is probably not used that much. And as soon as we start getting more foot traffic, there needs, I I'm sure you guys have seen it. It 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 just falls down there and it it's a, it's a scary thing.
I I believe the proposal was for the inside of, yeah, for the inside of. They'd have to come back and ask for anything.
No, I just, as a city, there's, there's a lot of danger
Yeah.
everywhere around there. So we just need to be cautious, more, you know, it's open to the public.
Yeah.
You know, but if we can, if, what I'm saying is if we can do something down there, which I rip rap, you know?
I say, erosion control, Josh.
It's very expensive. As long as there's somewhat caution, a sign up there that we can put a caution, steep grade. Because it's going to, it's going to draw a lot. It it's a good thing.
Yeah, there were a lot of positives from people about this as well.
Yeah, we hadn't received any negative comments. I mean, nobody spoke negatively at the planning commission meeting. Everybody was supportive that I talked to about the project.
All right, there is any, any negatives? We're good with the, moving forward to Oliver working with RC.
So there's a motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Motion, but welcome. All those in favor?
All right.
All righty. Moving on to new business. The appointment of the fire department chief.
Richard Nelson, you know, three of them.
The one that said there today. Wanted all the
I thought he was just hanging out today.
You know, I, I was going to, you know, try to get approval to move it up, but after having four appointments, I was like, ah, they're all appointments, so figured we had, yeah. Carpool. Um, I took my time and to make this decision um with all the circumstances. And um I felt that Dave was ready and been here for thirty years. He's well respected and so I was moving to appoint Dave as the fire chief. Anybody have any questions? I think it's a good appointment.
Confirm the mayor's appointment of David Nelson as the Craig volunteer fire chief.
All those, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Sorry, sorry I got that memo out later that I wanted to, but I wanted to make sure that when I had a chance to reach out to all the fire department members and let them know before, before the full discussion.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dave.
Moving on to appointing the new city planning director.
Move to confirm the appointment of Ivy Smith as the Craig planning director. Second.
Move your special? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, counsel.
Appointment of the CMC title sixteen interview committee members.
October thirtieth, appointments, discussion, mayor.
We did get one public interest letter um just yesterday, so the mayor has We did get one public interest letter just yesterday, so mayor hasn't had a chance to look it over, so.
We, we've had one application that I would, that I will be looking to appoint and bring back to the council, it wasn't on the.
So just move that to the deputy?
No, 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 I would recommend appointing the planning commissioners and city council members.
Oh, okay.
But there's nothing that restricts the mayor from bringing back the additional appointments for the twelfth.
Yeah, reach out and I think, yeah, we have a community member that wants to be involved, I think that's great, so.
That's true.
And I didn't get the letter until this afternoon or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's just a matter of time.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I'm excited.
So they don't have to do anything on this unless we want to veto it, right?
Yes. Yeah, under the municipal code, there's no confirmation vote for these appointments necessary, but the council has an opportunity if you want to veto some member on the list.
All right, all right. Thank you all.
I will be reaching out to you to schedule, start to schedule some meetings.
On the appointment FY 2026 budget committee members. Why is no longer with us?
I'm interested, I would say also I'll be traveling in January for a few weeks, so there'll be a couple proper meetings and I won't be there.
Other council members that would like to serve on the budget committee?
I don't know at this time if I can make everyone, but, when are they, mid-April? Where, where you wanted, you didn't say when you wanted to start, you think in January?
I likely will start this process. The reason that we're appointing budget committee members early is, as I shared earlier with the council, I would like to get the capital projects in front of the council early so that by the time January, February comes around, we already have those kind of settled and discussed.
Okay.
So I'm thinking probably late this month or early December, we'll start meetings with the department managers and budget committee just to talk about capital projects.
Well, I'm interested, like, December, you know, I don't know where I'm going to be.
I don't know if any of us made every one of them, but try to make all ones I can, so if it's, yeah, if you'd like to do all of them. Josh Millie, Mike.
Okay. Pretty good, thank you all. We'll put those three names down and Kimber will be reaching out about scheduling some meetings.
Counselor Thomas.
Did I have a, did we do 783, did I have a senior moment?
No, I was just going to ask the same question.
It was, first reading of that ordinance was approved under the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
So when motion was made to approve the consent agenda, that approved first reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
The ordinance will be back on the next agenda under consideration of resolution to ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
All those in favor? All right, thank you guys. I wonder, I wonder if you go into your Apple thing, find my fan on there.
Oh, right.
Find my device thing. I looked for my AirPods for like a week and then all of a sudden I go to find my AirPods and Tanner had them for me. But, yeah, thanks buddy.
That is hilarious.
They're upstairs. Yeah, I'm like, oh, when was the last time I was upstairs?
Oh, right. What, how long?
Almost.
No. You know that park, that radio car park earlier? I guess I missed all that, but was there no talk about?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I.